And just a heads up, we are recording.
Have you met Tom and Ashton yet?
I've met Tom, but I haven't.
Six thirty-three. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The planning commissioners, May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. Would you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is a roll call. Commissioner Huggins.
Ah, here.
Commissioner DeBoigne.
Present.
Commissioner Freiberger.
Present.
Commissioner Fatizzi. Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Fernet, here. And Commissioner Saxon called in. Did everyone here receive the minutes and have a chance to read them?
Yes.
Any comments on the minutes or consent agenda?
They were good to me.
They were good to you?
Yeah.
I got nothing.
I wasn't here, so they read well.
It's nice having all that detail when you miss.
Yeah.
So can I get a first and a second?
I may be approved of the minutes as presented.
Commissioner DeBoigne, first, second.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Freiberger, on favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 And any opposed, nay? Okay. Uh, what do we have next? General public comments. Am I on? Oh, there it is, that's better. Uh, do we have anyone here or online for general public comments? Do you want me to read the spiel?
Read the spiel.
Read the spiel? Please keep comments to three minutes or less. Because state law prohibits the use of city facilities for the purpose of supporting or opposing a campaign or ballot proposition, we respectfully request that public comment not make reference to such matters. Written comments will be accepted by letter or via email at nmcgowan@cedrowilly.gov. Attention, public comment. Do we have anything written or anyone online that would like to comment?
Nothing written or submitted via email.
Okay. I see we have guests. Oh, Commissioners Maddox, are you there? That's weird, it says Silas up there. Okay. So, if there's no general public comment, I will close that at six thirty-six. Public hearing. Proposed amendments to chapter twelve dot four zero Cedro Woolley Municipal Code and Cedro Woolley Municipal Code seventeen dot five zero dot zero seven zero to update tree standards. Not too many people here for that. Any, um, how do we start this? Do you?
I'll give my spiel, and then we can open for a public comment if there's anyone available.
You've got the floor.
Okay. The planning commission saw the first draft of the proposed amendments to chapter twelve forty and seventeen fifty Cedro Woolley Municipal Code at the April sixteen twenty twenty-four meeting. As we discussed at that meeting, these amendments are intended to rectify the issues that the planning and public works departments have been having with trees being planted too close to underground utility lines or sidewalks, as well as issues with trees that grow exceptionally high, being planted underneath overhead utility lines imposing a fire hazard. These issues stem from a lack of a codified requirement that root barriers be installed when trees are planted close to ground infrastructure, as well as the fact that some of the trees currently listed under our recommended trees list in chapter twelve forty Cedro Woolley Municipal Code do not fit well into their respective categories. Adding the requirement that root barriers be installed when trees are planted within five feet of an underground utility line and/or pedestrian walkway will ensure those, um, infrastructure are better protected from damage as the tree roots grow. Additionally, reworking the recommended trees list to include trees that better fit within the categories small, medium, and large trees, specifying the size of the landscape strip that pertains to each of those categories, and identifying trees that are suitable to be located under overhead utility lines will do just the same. All of this will also ensure that the planning and public works departments have solid regulations to follow when reviewing landscape plans for new development. At the last planning commission meeting, staff was tasked with adding the requirement that street trees are to be trimmed regularly to maintain a hazard-free environment for all users of the street. The following requirement has been added under planting standards. It shall be the responsibility of the adjacent property owner to regularly trim street trees between the ground and six feet above the ground surface, so as not to constitute a hazard or impediment to the progress or vision of anyone traveling on public property. If everyone here is happy with that language, I'm asking the planning commission tonight, following a public hearing, to make a motion to recommend that the city council approve the proposed amendments to chapter twelve forty and seventeen fifty Cedro Woolley Municipal Code.
Thank you, Nicole. So do we open it up now to our group or to the public?
The public.
The public. Okay, so the public portion of the public hearing is open at six thirty-nine for anyone who would like to speak. And do we have anyone online that would like to say something?
Anybody online that would like to speak, please raise the hand, and I will unmute your mic.
I don't see any hand raising. So should we assume that there is no public comment? Okay. That portion of the public hearing is closed. Now do we open it to us to comment?
Yep. If there's any discussion at this point, it's open to the planning commission to do so.
Okay. Commissioner DeBoigne, do you have a comment?
I didn't read the amendments, and I didn't note that any tree that was removed from one of the categories, small, big, or large, was added to a different category. They were all covered for. I confirm that. It didn't mean that any regulation in the public works department should be authored in the code to me.
Okay. Commissioner Freiberger?
So I had two comments, and I'm hoping this doesn't hold anything up. I think we can, um, still, if the commission so desires, you know, move this on. But the first one is, uh, let me look here. So, under twelve forty dot one twenty C, that trimming language that was added into the planting standards, it seemed to me that it might better go under twelve forty sixty, which already deals with trimming of overhanging trees as the duty of the property owner. That section wasn't included in this. But when I was looking at the overall code, it seemed, uh, like that might be a better place for it. But if staff has, um... And I'm not proposing any changes to it. I believe that is just fine, just maybe putting it in, in addition, right under, um, twelve forty sixty.
Give me a moment to pull up sixty.
Because it seems like it has less to do with planting standards than it does maintenance.
Okay, so the way twelve forty oh six oh reads, "All property owners within the corporate limits of the city shall, at their own expense, keep all trees, brush, and other foliage from projecting out over the public streets and sidewalks and alleys, so as not to interfere in any way with the use of street construction utility franchises right-of-way and license and cleaning equipment, nor shall the same interfere with sidewalk traffic or create a hazardous situation insofar as the same obstructs the view of motorists using the public streets."
And I think this just kind of helps clarify that a little bit for, you know, pedestrians using the sidewalks. So I'm happy with the language, just, um, possibly it might work better there. But either way.
So do you just recommend adding in, um, the section, the part where we say we look to regularly trim the trees between the ground surface and six feet above the ground surface?
Yeah, just putting it in right after that part that you just read. Obviously, it wouldn't be C then, it would just be, um, you know, the second paragraph under there, if that makes sense to everyone, and that seems appropriate.
Yeah. Given the title of that section, trimming overhanging trees, duty of property owner, I feel like that would be a good call out for that sort of thing.
It seemed a little out of place under planting, and if somebody's looking for what are my duties as property owner, then they can kind of find that in one spot.
Does the rest of the commission agree with that, or?
It makes sense to me.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. I think we can still move forward with a motion, just given that minor change.
Okay.
You had a second?
Yeah, the second item I had was under the seventeen fifty seventy F.
Seventeen what?
Fifty seventy F. It was the language that was added into the, so at the very bottom, right before the public hearing, notice on page eight. When I was looking, reading through twelve forty, the tree standards there, let me, if it's okay, I'll just read twelve forty thirty for you. Let me just pull it up here. So in twelve forty thirty, which is permission to plant trees, the very last sentence says, "No street tree other than small trees may be planted under or within ten lateral feet of any overhead utility wire or over or within five lateral feet of any underground water line, transmission line, or other utility." Now, it does make an exception for small trees there, so this may not be an issue, but I wanted to bring it up, that, going back to our proposed language being added to item F, it says, "Where trees are to be planted within five feet of a pedestrian walkway." So, um, that language that I just read in twelve forty seems to exclude "within" for most trees. So I don't know if we want to say just, um, five feet and take out "within" might be the simplest, or if staff feels like that is splitting hairs and not super critical, since we do have twelve forty thirty to also reference. I just didn't want it to seem like a contradiction, if that makes sense.
What was the number of the first one that you brought up? Twelve forty one twenty C?
That was proposed, and then... Uh, yes, is the part that I read, that that last sentence talks about, "Other than small trees, they can't be within five feet."
And what was the other code reference here?
So this is the suggested language here. We're saying, "Within five feet of a pedestrian walkway and/or underground utility line," and it slightly contradicts with what's in oh three oh.
It just doesn't call out, you know, that only small trees, so maybe it's not, it's not a straight-up contradiction. So, um, if that seems like it's, um... I just wanted to make sure it was clear that it was, um...
Trees should be planted within twenty feet of another.
Because it's supposed to be just small trees?
No, street tree other than small trees may be planted under or within ten lateral feet.
And this one doesn't distinguish small or large or any size?
Yeah, it just says, "Any tree, if you're within five feet of a pedestrian walkway or underground utility line."
Would it make sense to strike paragraph F?
So this requires specifically that root barriers be installed, whereas this is saying you can't plant any tree other than small ones within five lateral feet.
No, I definitely, we need, I believe we do need F in there. I just wanted to make sure that staff didn't feel like that could be construed as a contradiction at all. But considering that twelve forty thirty does allow for small trees, then perhaps it's, we're just not getting that specific here.
Would it make sense to modify F, then? Where's that duplicative?
I think it makes more sense to modify oh three oh. We could strike "other than small trees." Say, "No street tree may be planted under or within ten lateral feet of any overhead utility wire or over or within five lateral feet of any underground water line, transmission line, or other utility, unless root barriers are installed."
And then we would just need to say, take out "within" from the proposed language as well, so that they match up. Yeah, provided that that doesn't contradict with the, um, public works, because I did not look at their requirements.
The public works standard, it's a detail providing how a root barrier is installed.
Okay, so they don't...
So, yeah, it doesn't.
Okay, yeah. Provided that it doesn't cause issues for developers, I guess, when we're talking about planting trees in limited area, because I know we have had some issues with older areas of town having very narrow, um, planting strips. And so, I don't want to cause a undue problem there.
Give me a moment to take my notes, thank you. I'll say, unless a root barrier is installed according to public works department standards. Is everyone in agreement with that?
Do you believe that's something we can still make a motion on with these two?
I think so, because it's pretty clear, the language. There's not really much studying that I have to do to bring forth the change, so.
Okay.
It's a clear change.
Thanks, Commissioner Freiberger. Mr. Huggins?
Yes, so I have, I think, more questions than things I want to change, because I wasn't here. So could you define really quickly what a root barrier is these days? I mean, what is the, is it a concrete ring or something?
I think it's typically metal. They're posts that go in essentially vertically that divert... If they go in vertically near the utility line, essentially they divert the roots out, so that way they're not going to interfere with the utility line underground. Same thing with the sidewalk. It's kind of a strategic placement of these posts.
And that's not an overwhelmingly expensive thing to do? I'm thinking more for homeowners than for developers, but I just want to make sure you didn't have to, like, buy a culvert ring and put it, bury it in there, and then plant your tree inside of it, then. Okay, and then, thank you. And then, the way I read the, I think it's the same thing that you were talking about, and maybe you're talking about the same thing, but on seventeen fifty oh seven oh D one, or, excuse me. No, sorry, number F, the one that we added, it says, "Where trees are to be planted within five feet of a pedestrian walkway and/or underground utility line, root barriers are required to be required for the public to code and shall be installed to protect infrastructure." So that's basically everything. I mean, only a ten-foot planting strip doesn't require a barrier for every plant, because if you're in the middle of a five-foot or a seven-foot, you're putting in a barrier, no matter what kind of a tree you're putting in, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Just making sure I'm on the same page. And then the last thing was, uh, this was it. This was seventeen fifty oh seven oh minimum landscape material specifications. And then D, right there on the same page, it says, "Street trees shall be provided as follows: minimum planting width, ten feet." Is that the planting strip width, the minimum is ten feet? Or, because up at the top in twelve forty one ten, it says that you can have either a five-foot, a five-foot, a seven-foot, or a ten-foot. And D says that it has to be minimum of ten-foot planting strip, is how I interpret that.
I see what you're saying. Minimum planting width, ten feet.
I like that, if it's true.
You know, I'm not quite sure what they intended with that. You could interpret that in a few different ways.
I know in the parts you guys wrote, you had planting strip widths, and then the next thing was the minimum spacing. And so, when I read it, I was...
Minimum planting... How did you say that, minimum?
Planting strip.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because that makes more sense than, because the next one, you're right, is spacing.
Is it the spacing, width and spacing?
You'd think if it was talking about minimum spacing, they would say that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's probably correct. Minimum planting strip width would be ten feet.
That's what I took it to mean.
Yeah.
So then my concern is that with the thing that we're creating, we're downsizing the planting strip width, and I would really like to see them, I thought they were already smaller than that. I thought they were allowed three feet, because I've seen them built all over town with only three foot of a...
Could I interject here with something? Because on my notes, I was going to say the same thing you just said, only there's, there's, on twelve dot four dot, twelve four zero dot oh three oh, it says four feet minimum. Twelve dot four zero one one zero says five foot minimum, and seventeen dot five zero zero seven one, the one you brought up, says ten foot minimum.
Right.
So there's, and I can also, I'm going to bring up some other things that are haywire, like that.
So I...
Confused, I shouldn't say haywire, confusing.
So I will hand it back to you, and you, and you can go on with yours, because it sounds like you're even more questions.
In addition to that, minimum spacing, there's a ten-foot minimum, twenty-foot minimum in two different spots, a thirty-foot maximum, a forty-foot maximum in two different spots, and a twenty-five-foot minimum in another spot. So I thought we should probably get them all coordinated.
That should be cleaned up.
Yeah. Do you have those citations there? Yes.
Can you?
You want to start with the ones?
One by one, list off each location you see a planting strip.
Minimum strip width. If you look up twelve dot four zero dot zero three zero, which is actually not in our packet here, it mentions four feet. And then twelve dot four zero dot one one zero, which is in our packet, is five feet. And then, what Commissioner Huggins just brought up, ten feet minimum, seventeen dot five zero dot zero seven zero. And I believe there's Clingerville, I bet you they're four feet.
The Sauk Mountain is three, and those trees blow over every time we have a windstorm, because they're growing in three-foot strips. So they're growing east-west, and then when the wind comes, they just flop over on the sidewalk or into the street.
I've seen that in Clingerville, too. And then I can bring up the minimum spacing ones, too, if you want. Okay. There's ten-foot minimum spacing. There's 10-foot minimum spacing in 17 dot five zero dot zero seven zero, D1, Delta 1. Then, if you look at 12 dot four zero dot one one zero A, it's 20-foot minimum spacing. And then, if you look at 12 dot four zero dot zero three zero, it's 25-foot minimum spacing. And I assume it's all apples to apples, there could be different.
I think it varies on the planting strip width, right? So, if you have the smaller trees and the narrower planting strip, then they're going to be closer together. If you've got the bigger trees and the wider planting strips, then they're going to be farther apart, but I don't know if they're...
It does, that is, there is a correlation. It's like, if it's 5 feet wide, it's 20 feet, 6 feet wide, it's 7 feet wide, it's something, and 10 feet wide, it's something else, but... And then, when it says 30-foot maximum, 17 dot five zero dot zero seven zero, D2. And then, 40-foot maximum, 12 dot four zero, oh, I missed the end of it, C, I'm not figuring what that one is.
Let me look that up.
And if it's all written correctly, I got no problem. I just was confused why there were so many. And some of it I follow perfectly, you know, width equals distance, yeah.
Yeah, mainly, it's the minimum width is the thing. But I think we definitely have to establish a minimum and why that minimum exists, you know, whether we have 5, 7, and 10, or 7, 10, or 12. I don't care what that is, we just need to get the minimum set, so that we know that the trees will stand up.
5 is the standard, according to the Public Works Department, for a small landscape strip, you have to have a minimum of 5.
But these are standalone, I believe.
There are exceptions to that, that exist, but 5 is the standard for new development.
Is 5 feet standard for new?
5 feet width, standard landscape strip, yeah. But, yeah, I agree with Pat. If you have anything less than that, the roots aren't going to be able to establish well, anytime you get a windstorm, you're going to have to go up and clean up a tree. So, I think 5 is probably good for a minimum. We would have to change to Public Works Department standards if we went with anything different than that.
Oh, and even, I'm sorry, UT trees, utility trees?
Yeah.
There's one spot in 12 dot four zero dot one one zero that says 20 feet. Then, there's a spot in 12 dot four zero dot zero three zero that says 25 feet.
For distance between trees?
This would be height. For UT means utility underneath power lines.
Yes, right, okay.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, I don't want to be splitting hairs, but it should be somewhat uniform. Oh, and Pat, I looked up root barriers.
Yeah.
And usually, they're a plastic screen that goes from 2 to 4 feet down, or whatever depth is needed, to prevent roots from going that direction.
Right.
And they make them out of all kinds of different materials, but it's usually just a plastic or metal or stakes or something. They even make them chemical, they make chemicals that will stop the roots from going that direction, which probably isn't a good thing for around here, but...
Yeah, I doubt if that would work here, because it would leach out pretty fast, but...
Yeah, I thought it'd be like a big concrete barrier or something would be.
Well, I just know how they do it, like on college campuses and stuff, you know, you see them burying those big, huge culvert joints, and they drop them in the thing, and then they plant the tree in the middle of it, and then they put backfill and put all the paper and everything, and you know nothing's ever getting out of that.
Yeah.
So, I'm reconsidering moving to a motion now. There's a lot here that I think we need to kind of go through with a fine-tooth comb.
Yeah, and I apologize not to see all that when you brought it up, but it took me a while to read through it all.
Yeah.
And sorry to make you repeat yourself, you said the Public Works standard is a 5-foot minimum strip. That's what they're working to right now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, excellent, so...
I think if we stick with what we've written for these draft regulations, or draft amendments, and just change the rest of them to kind of match up with it, I think that that would work for what we're trying to do here.
Okay.
And after, oh, sorry. And after hearing Commissioner Huggins and Commissioner Fournette, and the things they brought up, I'm thinking, probably, I'm sure you'll take another thorough look at item F, because I'm concerned that my suggestion on the 5 feet may then conflict or contradict something else that I didn't see before, just because a lot of things were brought up here that I didn't notice, so...
That seems like something that you could put, I mean, I know you have to put the wording in, but I think that that's something you could put really easily into a table, that, you know, minimum 5, spacing whatever, height whatever, and then, you know, 7 feet spacing, height, 10 feet spacing, height. And you'd have a nice, simple table that was easy for developers and homeowners to do.
Would you like to see the recommended trees in the table, or more looking for, like, I'm trying to visualize, like, what all you would like in the table?
Or maybe a second table with the trees, because that's, there's a lot more of them, so it's going to be, that's going to make it a lot harder. Yeah, it's a pretty good size list, but, I mean, you could try it and see, but, yeah, anything that just makes it easy, that you can say, "This is, if I do a 5-foot, this is what I got to do, and if I'm going to do a 7-foot, this is what I got to do," and that's always helpful for...
Yeah.
Width and spacing table, and then, the list of trees and stuff. And then, we'll sit with Public Works to make sure that they understand what we're doing here as well.
Yeah.
We're all on the same page.
Okay.
Okay.
I had a question, I had a question, maybe a simple one. When it says 5 feet, my underground utility line, have 5 vertical feet, the line underground, so, is 5 feet from the ground, is it 5 vertical feet or 5 horizontal feet?
To an underground utility line?
Yes.
Yes, if it's vertical or if it's horizontal, whichever... Wherever you put the tape that's 5 feet from it, then you have to put in a root barrier.
Okay. I'm trying to picture the 5 feet, it's from the tree, the utility line underground, so is the distance from the level of the ground to the line? Okay, I understand now.
Okay.
Sorry.
Don't apologize.
That was a good question, because it could be vertical, too. So, root barriers would have to be horizontal instead of vertical, yeah.
Yeah.
And I had one other question, I guess, but, oh, here it is, I did find it. Excellent, okay. So, it said, in the... Oh, okay, it was in your, in your... Staff report, thank you, Daniel. In your staff report, yeah, down here, it was talking about the, our goals, land use goals and transportation element, and it's said, "Preserve the characteristics of natural environment, preserve community character, encourage high standard of appearance." And I was going to say, I guess I don't have a real problem with it, but it doesn't seem like there's many native trees listed in the...
I had the same thought.
As I was going down through it, I was saying, well, this is, I'm sure these trees fit the street standards, but they're, not many of them are anything, half of them I've never heard of, or if I have, I've seen them in Oregon, California, or back east or something, you know, in a street thing. And so, anyway, like I said, it's not really a thing, but I'm not sure it fits the, preserve the character of the natural environment land use policy.
I figured the more they use something, it'll be more native.
Yeah, well, we know that everything here grows out of control, right?
That's kind of the thought.
If it's supposed to be a 10-foot tree, it's going to wind up being 25 feet, so...
I was looking at ash, and there's like 100 different, 100 different ash trees, but only one grows in Washington, and that's Oregon ash, but it's not called that, it's something else.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, I can look for more native tree options.
Yeah.
They're probably going to be medium, large-sized trees.
Yeah, probably. And I know another one that I've seen, but it's probably too nasty for a street tree, and that's the Gary oak, which grows a little bit here. I have Gary oaks on my property, and they can be nice, but they're, they can be a little rangy, too, but they kind of top out about 20 feet, 25 feet. And that's actually a native plant. They grow more out in the San Juans than here, but they do grow here, so, anyway.
You said it was Gary oak?
A Gary oak, yeah, you can look it up. I don't know what it's, something, I don't remember what oak is in Latin, but it's Gary honest, so, yeah, something Gary honest.
Are there any other comments before we close the public meeting?
I did just have one kind of process question. So, we are amending a section of Title 17, which is technically the zoning code, but this does not require SEPA review, is that correct?
Correct, no, because it's a non-project.
Non, okay, and, okay.
If there's nothing further, should we close the public meeting and resume? Would it be another public meeting then, next month, or?
If the planning commission would like to do that, we can, but because we're asking for quite a number of changes here, I think it might be safe just to do a presentation, re-review, and then you can task me with doing a public hearing at the following meeting.
So, July would be the...
So, we don't have another discussion tonight.
Surprise. Okay. So, if there's nothing else, we'll close the public meeting at 7:12.
Okay.
And go on to unfinished business. Proposed amendments to Chapter 2.90, Title 17, Cedar Woolley Municipal Code, and the master fee schedule to add regulations in permitting impact fees for tiny home communities.
Woody, can you bring up my presentation, please?
Wow.
I have something for you today.
Who all went to the field trip?
Joe Fatizzi went, Tom went, Danielle went.
Joe?
Myself.
And you, and who, Tom?
And Tom.
Oh, okay, so four?
And that's it, yeah.
Okay, great.
Not a quorum.
Not a quorum. Okay, so, at the April 16, 2024 meeting, the planning commission voiced appreciation for the changes made to the draft amendments with respect to allowable density, site design, and design standards, but also voiced difficulty in visualizing what the final product might be. So, I put together a brief presentation to help the planning commission visualize the product we're trying to achieve through these draft regulations for tiny home communities. The presentation depicts examples of cottage housing constructed by a local company called The Cottage Company, who've built what they have dubbed pocket neighborhoods. There are a variety of different layouts we'll be taking a look at, but I think each of them have nice features that we can consider incorporating into the amendments. I also included some pictures taken from our tour of Wildwood cottages, tiny home community on Lake Watcom, which was a very unique development, and we'll get into more detail on that. But, yeah, next slide, please. Yeah, so, the cottage housing developments, they basically focus on simple, smart, sustainable communities of compact homes. So, they tend to have ranges between a truly tiny home, which is 400 square feet, all the way up to, I've seen, 1,700 square feet, something like that. So, still on the small side, but this is cottage housing, so you can get kind of a variety of small things in there. Next slide, please. So, this first one here is Chico Beach cottages in Silverdale, Washington. I apologize that the picture is so small, but the site size here is 1.1 acres, so very close to the maximum site size allowable that we put in for the tiny home communities. So, you can kind of see, these are not extensive housing developments. Here, we have seven homes. Each of the homes range between 1,470 square feet to 1,750 square feet. There are separate garages for storage, and it also has a kind of community parking lot. Each of the homes kind of has a pedestrian walkway that leads to, from the house to the parking lot. You can see it's right on the beach, so that's very nice recreation, as well as kind of an open space area connecting to that, that everyone shares here, and a clubhouse. So, I'm not sure, I didn't read too much into, you know, the regulations that kind of surrounded all of these, but I think using our clubhouse density bonus, that might be something worth keeping. Next slide, please. And some pictures from the Chico Beach cottages, so you can see, these are very nice-looking homes. They look like a single-family residence. These are tiny homes, so built on a permanent foundation. The clubhouse is in the bottom right. It looks really nice.
What's in a clubhouse?
Well, you can find pool tables, TVs, seating lounge, I don't know, maybe they have a nice karaoke night, maybe once in a while. You could put just about everything in there, but, yeah.
Well, that's right, you didn't see this one. This is just another one that you know about?
Right, yeah, this is, yeah. But landscaping requirements are pretty obvious here. Walkway is open space, that was all required. You can see that there are no on-site parking requirements, it's all community parking in this case. Next slide. So, this one here is Danielson Grove in Kirkland, Washington. The site size is a little bit larger, 2.25 acres. We have 16 homes here, and we got a bigger range, 651 square feet is the smallest, and the largest is 1,500 square feet. There are separate garages. They do allow for garage parking in this case, as well as on-street parking. There's a clubhouse, again, and we have two smaller private recreation areas, all accessible via pedestrian walkways. Yeah, next slide. Again, we see kind of orientation around a central open space here, with walkways kind of coming from each of the residences to the open space. Landscaping is big here. And again, they all look like a nice, single-family home. Tiny homes, well, roughly, maybe not by direct definition, but they are on the smaller side, built on permanent foundation. Next slide. These are the Conover Commons in Redmond, Washington. Site size 1.6 acres, so just a hair larger than our maximum site, we, site size we would be allowing for tiny home communities. There are 12 homes here, they are all 1,000 square feet in size. The, there are twelve homes here, they are all one thousand square feet in size. And here we have separate garages just for storage. They do have a shared parking lot area with walkways to each of the homes, a clubhouse. In this case, they do have a native growth protection area that they've worked into kind of the site, so they've got a picnic shelter and a little overlook area that you can kind of take in that amenity from, from the outside. Not sure if they have walking trails throughout there, probably not, but that might be nice. Next slide. You can see this one's a little bit more on the compact side, but, yeah, walkways through, lots of landscaping, and see how well they've integrated that native growth protection area with the walking space, and again, permanent homes.
Did you say they're all one thousand feet?
All one thousand square feet.
So they're all two stories, too, right?
Correct.
So they're five hundred down and five hundred up, like that?
I think, I think it's the footprint, so the footprint itself would be one thousand.
So it could be fifteen hundred if you count the upstairs?
Right.
Okay.
So if they're red, that's one unit or two?
That's one unit. Next slide. This is Erickson cottages in Bainbridge Island, Washington. The site size is point nine acres, so within our limit for our maximum site size for tiny home communities. There are eleven homes here, ranging from ten thousand forty-nine square feet to ten thousand ninety, roughly all the same size. They do have separate garages with garage parking allowed, some shared parking on-site, not too many, I think I see six, seven spaces, probably more for visitors. Private recreation area accessible via pedestrian walkways, and a clubhouse. Next slide, please. I didn't have too many pictures I liked on this one, it was mostly of the interiors, but, again, you can kinda see, it is pretty tight. I'd like to have seen a little bit more of the open space area, but you can kind of tell that they did orient that, the homes around a central open space with the walkways coming.
They look better in the photos than they do in their plan, in their site plan.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, again, lots of landscaping and pretty, pretty strict design standards, I think, here. Next slide.
Did you say that the downspout was a chain? I don't know if that's code anymore.
Right. So this is Greenwood Avenue cottages in Shoreline, Washington. This is a point eight acre site, so within our limits. There are eight homes here, ranging from seven hundred and sixty-eight square feet to nine hundred ninety-eight, definitely on the smaller size here. Separate garages with garage parking allowed. There is some shared parking, again, likely for visitors, private recreation area accessible via pedestrian walkways, and a clubhouse. Next slide. I see a trend here. So, they're oriented around an open space, kind of central, lots of landscaping, and strict design standards, they're all built on a permanent foundation. And Third Street cottages, this is our last one, this is Woodby Island, Washington, point seven one acre site with eight homes. All of them are less than nine hundred square feet in this case. They do have a shared parking lot with pedestrian walkways to each of the homes, private recreation area accessible via pedestrian walkways, and a clubhouse. I think this is the smallest of all of them. Next slide. Not the greatest of pictures, but, yeah, this one's pretty compact. You get the walkways through, landscaping.
This one Langley, is this in Langley?
This one was Woodby Island.
Oh, well, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
How does that, well, you weren't there, it looks a lot like Smurthville up the road here in.
Gittleville.
Gittleville, yeah. It has that look to it.
Or sorry, that's Wildflower Estates.
Wildflower, yeah, that's it. It looks similar.
It does, it does.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we, we already allowed this with them, we just made them go through the PRD.
Right.
To do it, and maybe this'll make it easier if we create a, more of a roadmap for them versus having to do battle with the developers as they try to figure it out themselves. But, I mean, we already did this, I, I think these are awesome, but.
Yeah, and fighting our planned residential development regulations, I feel like, I wasn't there for that process, but I feel like they did have to kinda wiggle around the rules there.
It was always a running battle with size of lots versus amenities versus, and Klinger was also, parts of it was trying to be this during that, and that was also a running battle with the developer over the size of amenities versus the size of lots and stuff like that, and that's why they set the minimum lot size, because they were trying to get down to really, really, really tiny lots. So, anyway, I don't wanna get into the whole history of that, but, but anyway, I mean, these are awesome, and we can already do them through the PRD, but it might be better if you have a ordinance that specifies those things like point eight acres and, for size, and because they were kind of unlimited on the size that they could do under the PRD.
Right. You need three acres to do a planned residential development, so if we're thinking on the smaller scale, I feel like three acres, we're, we're definitely getting to creating a sea of these things. So, I don't know, I think it'd be smarter to create a new set of regulations for something like this. But, next slide, please. So, a little bit on our tour of the Wildwood Lakefront cottages, so on the screen you'll see their site layout. This was an interesting case, so the Wildwood Lakefront cottages, the site was originally a campground meant for RVs, tents, that sort of thing, along the lake. And the property owner bought this, said, you know, what would it take to do a tiny home community here? The county had him go through the conditional use permitting process, and due to the zoning, he was required to keep them all as park models. And he told us the only difference between a park model and a tiny home, according to the definition, is he just leaves one axle on the park model. They had very strict design standards in this specific case, and so that was literally the only difference. So, yeah, you can see there are, there are quite the number of lots here. There are no setbacks, it's zero lot line in this case, but they did make sure to keep a decent-sized lot for each of these. They all have very nice landscaping, you'll see in a few of the pictures coming, but, yeah, no, no on-site recreation areas, like, well, I guess they have, they did have their clubhouse and like a tennis court off to the side, and the pool, but the lake was kind of the major.
And is that the dock and stuff part of it?
Yes, mm-hmm.
Like a marina?
It's all part of it.
You could have a boat and stuff there.
Yes, you can, yeah. So let's start going through the pictures, next slide. So, these are some examples Tom took of some tiny homes there, so, kind of boxy in concept, very modern-looking. They're all four hundred square feet, all park models.
All four hundred.
All four hundred square feet. What the, what, what the gentleman said was that each of them can have a loft area that does not count toward the four hundred square feet, so it, it does still work for the park model definition.
And were people building roofs over the top of their park models then?
Yeah.
So that's what we're seeing there?
Yes.
And then a big.
Yeah, they have rooftop decks.
Rooftop deck and all that, okay, so there's no ordinance or law against adding on?
No, not as, as far as I know.
No, I think there was a height limit, but you could go up to the height limit with an additional deck, or in some cases they stair-stepped them.
Was, was there a permitting process for that, or they just do it?
There is a permitting process for the additions.
Yeah, so if you're gonna do, you know, an extension of a porch or the rooftop addition, you would have to go through the building permit process for that.
So the, these are pretty big lots then, huh?
You know? Did you ever catch how big those lots were?
I didn't catch how big they are, but you're right, there is space between them that's reasonable for a tiny home village.
Yeah, if I were to guess, four hundred in each of them, kinda, they tended to look like they had at least a ten-foot front step back, and on the rear.
Inside.
Most of them had one parking space, so you're probably gonna get nine or ten feet on the side on that, on that side, and then five feet on the other, so I'd have to do math on that.
Yes, with, with no, no setbacks, you can use, utilize more space that way.
Right. Yeah, so, let's see, if it was.
Let's look through the next one.
Yeah, next slide, please.
And this is a year-round community, they don't have to move in or out, right?
No, they, because it's a campground, they're limited in their time and how much they, time they can be there.
Okay.
So, for example, the folk, I think it's six months is the limit.
Six months, mm-hmm.
And it wasn't clear to me if that was six continuous, contiguous months, or if it was a total of six months.
I think it's a total of six months, yeah.
Six months at a time.
Mm-hmm.
The one that we toured inside, the people that owned it, for example, they, they taught in Africa, and they come back here for summertime and stay in their house, so, that's more, that's an example of how that's used.
Okay, s, yeah, there, so that's like, what is it? There's one just like this up at the lake, it's not Lake Shannon, what's the one next to it? Baker Lake?
Taiyi.
Taiyi, yeah, Taiyi. It's, yeah, on Baker Lake, it's just like that. They've got the tennis courts and the clubhouse, and, and spots just like this, and people can be there six months out of the year, so it's the same idea, is that?
Yeah, they were, it was a campground, I think it was a, it was like KOA-type thing originally.
Yeah, and then there's Pillagwamish is another one just like that, down by Granite Falls. Anyway, sorry.
Yeah, so, lots of big windows, just very, very strict design standards here, I think, so.
That you're adding on, you're making up, how do you say this, you're making up the lack of indoor space by having a lot of outdoor space.
Right, covered decks and stuff.
Indoor, outdoor living, yeah.
Yeah. Next slide. Got some of the interior, so there's a picture of kind of the covered porch area here. The living room in this middle picture, they, they had moved things kind of over to the side, and they weren't home at the time, so it just kinda put stuff, but.
Storage.
Storage, yeah. Yeah, so you can see, big windows, the, the kitchen was really nice, everything's very compact in here, but it doesn't feel cramped, per se. Next slide.
And does each lot have their own power meter and water, and is, are they sewer or septic?
They are septic here.
Each, each lot?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
They have kind of like a shared septic system, yeah.
Community septic.
Community septic, yeah.
In-sight.
Water, I think they had, they each had one.
Probably, so. It's the water supply for building, and they probably pump right out of the, right out of the lake.
Out of the lake, and then it looks like people had propane then?
Mm, yeah. So there's the bedroom, the bathroom, and the little loft area above. It is pretty short, I had to bend over to go in there, but, pretty cool space. Next slide. These were kind of my takeaways, you feel free to add anything, but these are definitely on the high end, not what I would consider affordable, given the lake frontage and the quality of design in this case. They did have one parking space per unit, they were all gravel, I did see some EV charging infrastructure. All units were on septic, we would require sewer connection here, of course, where sewer's available. All units are four hundred square feet, and the loft area does not count toward the square footage. All units are park models, built on a trailer chassis, technically are considered RVs, and that's to meet with the county's requirement, since it's a, technically a campground designation. Great architectural design, I think we could use a lot of this, maybe tone it down a little, but include a lot of this within our design standards. Zero lot line, no setback requirements, it still incorporates a lot of landscaping in a lot of the lots for beautification, and recreational amenities were included, they had a lake, obviously, a clubhouse and a tennis court. The clubhouse was really nice, it was on the big side, they had foosball and pool, TV, everything, yeah, it was pretty nice, a little gym, too.
And a fridge.
And a fridge. And Joe helped himself, too.
I think what impressed me is, is the creative use of, of outdoor space to compensate for the small size of the houses, and, you know, like I said, not just the community space, but the, the covered decks, the outdoor, the balconies, and a lot of them had their, you know, their grills outside and picnic tables on the decks, and you could see that that was an outdoor living space. You know, pretty cool.
There didn't seem to be, I, I do recall asking him, because it looked like most of them had, were allowed, they were allowed one shed to, to store things in, and, and so there was a limitation on that, and I didn't get what, did he say a hundred and twenty square feet, was that like, or am I just pulling that number out? I don't remember a, a size limitation, obviously it couldn't be as big as the house.
Yeah.
They were all about the same size.
They were all the same size.
Yes, yeah.
Like ten by twelve?
Yeah, they were.
I wanna say they were ten by twelve, yeah, ten by twelve, ten by fourteen.
Oh, I wrote down six by eight is what I wrote, but.
Six by eight?
Yeah, but. And then, just kind of to Commissioner Fournette's comment about the porches, did, I don't recall, was there limitations on how big, they couldn't be bigger than the house in square footage, but some of them seemed almost the same size? And, and because these are park models and they are permitted through labor and industry similar to a manufactured mobile home, the porches have to be detached, they cannot be supported, but of course, if we're looking at something that's not going through that process, then we wouldn't, I don't know how that would work, like if there's a square footage limitation, that's something we'll have to look at.
I don't recall him ever mentioning a square footage limitation on the, on the porches.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it obviously didn't count to the square footage of the home, but that may be how they were able to get around that, is because technically they're a separate thing, but if we're looking at permitting through a tiny home process versus park model, because I don't see any reason why we would do that necessarily, then, then.
We just specify that it is a separate, it's not included at building footprint.
Yeah, and that, yeah.
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 Yeah, I like that.
It seems like all the other examples you gave us are closer to what we're trying to do, but this one looks, seems more like a campground like Taiyi.
Right.
Which is just recreational.
Yeah.
But a good example of what could be done.
There, there are examples of them, there are cities that are actually allowing a certain portion of town to be done that way, but it's on a case-by-case basis, and they're like that, they, they all have to be on a movable, they have to be movable, so they have to be able to be road, roadworthy and, and moved. But I haven't seen any that looked, that, that would be attractive to the community, they would be attractive to the people who like the tiny homes and that lifestyle, but, but I haven't seen any yet that the community would be, would be thrilled about, probably.
Yeah.
There's a couple down in Oregon, I wanna say McMinnville, but I might be wrong about that. There's a couple down in Oregon, I want to say McMinnville, but I might be wrong about that, there's one.
But I think what our goal here is to create permanent housing, affordable housing that people can get into and build equity or something, so that's foundations and sewer and, yeah.
A thought that I had, what if we rebranded this to something like cottage housing? So we're not confusing, you know, I think it would be better not to just, four hundred square feet, that's all you get. You know, tiny homes, I think that maybe comes with a little bit of a negative connotation, because you're thinking of things like, you know, those typically transitional facilities where it kind of looks like a shed and popping up.
When we did it the last time, we called them cottage clusters.
Cottage clusters, yeah.
Yeah, because they were, wasn't, it was just a handful.
That would be nice, because then it gives you the idea of, it's like it's a neighborhood community and you've got amenities.
Cottage what?
Cottage clusters.
Clusters?
Yeah.
Oh, nice.
When you did it last, is that the?
Well, I didn't, we didn't, not when we did this last time, so we didn't do this last time, but when we allowed them to go through the PRD, and we were trying to tweak the PRD and everything, we call, we talked about them as cottage clusters, and that, we didn't make that up, that was a name that, these kind of housing, I think we got it from, I can't remember what the place is called now, it's down in Langley, Washington, they were one of the first ones down on Woodby Island, and they were one of the first ones to allow one of these in the modern era. Seattle has a whole bunch of what they call cottage courts, which is usually just the walkway down, and then there's like four cottages on each side that are maybe five hundred square feet, six hundred square feet on each side of the walkway, and they were usually laid out very symmetrically. But Langley was the first one to come up with this, at least in Washington, with this concept of, you know, the parking on the outside, the court in the center, and then the houses spaced around it with, with a lot of landscaping, what the Wildwood cottages up here by Northern State tried to be. And just a couple of the issues, I mean, well, I think you're probably aware of the issues, because you're in the planning department, but, but they were, they were planned to be entry-level homes or retirement homes, and of course immediately, they, because you can't, you can have an idea about who you want in the homes, but you can't make that happen by law, so you have immediately had young people starting out, and they had two cars or three cars, but that's all they could afford was that tiny house, and so you had way more cars and there were parking spaces. You had people who were retired there or coming there part of the year and not part of the year up there, and so you had mobile homes that were trying to park up there originally, and now I think they have to park in a storage place or something, but, but anyway, there was a lot of parking problems with the cottage cluster up there at Northern State, so. And they were also, where they were set up, the ones we looked at when they were, we were looking at it in two thousand and seven, whatever it was, another thing was is that all of the ones that we looked at were set up on bus lines that had frequent bus service, and one, an hour between buses is not frequent enough, you know, people are like, I'm not waiting an hour for the bus, I'm just gonna take the car. And so it didn't cut down, they were supposed to cut down on car trips, but they didn't here because they built them miles from, from reliable bus service, so. Those, I just bring those up because those were issues that immediately came up after they opened up to the, to the public, so those are things we gotta think about.
What does the planning commission feel about the garages being used as parking space?
Using garages for parking?
That's an oop.
What a strange concept.
Versus shared parking.
Versus the community parking lot, or, yeah, shared parking or on-street parking, those alternatives. I mean, we can, we can always use a combination of things, but maybe satisfying a portion of the required parking with garage spaces.
I think, okay, I always forget the name of the one at the top of Fruitdale. Is it Wild?
Wildflower.
Wildflower, and you were at Wildwood?
Yeah.
So, Wildflower, they have like clustered garages, I think, three or four or five in a row away from the houses, so you park in there, then walk to your house, so.
Yes.
That's one way of doing it.
That was the, the original cottage clusters, cottage clusters were that you walked in and your parking garage or your space was on the outside, and you had, you had to walk in to the community. So you can do other things like that, but then that's not quote a cottage cluster.
Right. I helped my son move his girlfriend into a house on Thirty, just off College Way in Mount Vernon, and there were three little crescent driveways with tiny homes with, one crescent had two-story tiny homes, and the other two little crescent driveways had one single story. And hers was just cute as could be, she's renting it for eighteen hundred a month, but the one, one of the two stories on the other crescent over, it's just like a driveway that is like a one-way driveway, and then right in front of each house was either one parking space or two, and there was no, if any, there was maybe a, maybe a two-foot setback on the sides, and maybe twenty feet in front, just enough for a single car or two-car. And there was one for sale, one of the two-story ones was four hundred and thirty thousand, I think, or four twenty. And, which, well, I was wondering, who, who owns all those ones that you were showing us? Are those, are people renting those, or are they buying them, or do you, you probably haven't gotten that far to find out?
Are you talking about Wildwood?
Yeah, well, not, I think I know the answer there, but I mean, all the other nice ones that you were showing us, like in Kirkland and Bainbridge Island and wherever they were, are those individually owned? Or is a corporation own them all and rent them all out, or?
Those are individually owned.
So the, for sale signs go up, they go on the market and people buy them? Okay, do corporations buy all of them and then rent them all out and?
That's a good question, I don't know. I don't know.
We could search around and look.
Yeah, look up, look at that.
Because that's, that's usually, I saw that at Clingerville, I looked up on Skagit assessor's website, and I wanted to see who owned all those, and there was like an entire block owned by one corporation.
In Clinger? Wow, so the rate, the real estate investment trusts are buying up stuff here, too, huh? That's interesting, because they're doing this big time down in the southeast, down in Georgia and Florida and stuff, they're, they're buying up whole chunks of cities, the, the real estate trusts, and turning everybody into renters, basically.
Yeah, so is, 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 as much as we want this to work how we have it visioned, we have to figure that part out. And like you say, you can't regulate who buys it, but sure would be nice if, if there was something that could be done. But I'm, I'm all over the place, there's just so many questions, it's just like.
Yeah, that's what we're here for.
Yeah.
When I, the presentation, when they caught, they caught my eye was the central parking. It didn't mean having a wide area where everybody parked would be more affordable, because you're not building a separate garage for every unit, and more better use of real estate as well.
Community parking, a better use of real estate?
I would say so.
Yeah.
In that way, all you're doing is to separate the parking, they should just buy a page versus a whole new garage for every unit.
That's a good point, yeah.
I think garages are a sailing, a selling feature for sure, but not necessary.
I wonder if that was the incentive for the, the way the garages are done at Wildflower, to, for the communal garages, not use up so much space.
Right.
Yeah.
Housing mostly, I guess.
Yeah, because they're clustered and take up the least amount of space.
Yeah, and one of the, one of the tenants of cluster housing was, is that, like I said, that they, they were created for high bus route areas, and so the idea was that you, you don't need a car, because you're just gonna take the bus to downtown to take the, you know, it's because it's only a half mile away or a mile away, and, and you get on the bus or whatever and do the thing. So they're not, they weren't really designed to be a mile and a half out of town, or the bus only runs once an hour at best, and, and, and so it didn't help getting people out of their cars, so people had two, three cars parked around it, and, and I don't know if it's still a problem that way or not, but, yeah.
I've gone out there a few times, it doesn't seem excessive parking on the street. There are pretty much always some people parked on the street there, though, but it doesn't seem.
Condominium complexes like that, where you've got the multifamily building, and then you've got across the alley or something, you've got the row of garages. The same idea.
Yeah, my apartment was like that in Mill Creek, yeah, we had nice views out of, at the valley, and, and then behind us, where you went out, when you went out the, down your stairs and out the front door, which was the back of the unit, you went across the street and your car space was right there and you, you know.
Same idea.
I will say that personally, I do like the idea of the kind of communal parking, but not providing parking, obviously, we aren't even considering that, because, well, it's impractical. I mean, in Cedar Woolly, even if you can walk everywhere, we know people won't, even if the buses do run consistently, you know, it's just not convenient enough for, for people. But one thing I will say is, if we're talking covered versus uncovered parking, I definitely think some sort of enclosed or covered at least carport or something, rather than just a lot, or just because with the weather around here, it's not ideal, and folks do not like to go out when it's pouring down rain like it is right now. And, and, for example, in, in Mount Vernon, in older developments where they didn't provide covered parking, that's continuously something we're dealing with, is, is people coming in wanting to build a carport, and, and in our mobile home parks, of course, all sorts of problems with that because of non-conformities and small lot sizes, and trying to do that after the fact, it should have been planned for. Because, yeah.
That's a good point, yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree with Danielle, and I'm sure everybody's heard me say it at least once, especially with the big developers, that our desire to have people get out of their cars does not align always with the reality that, of the situation, and, and so I think you have to provide, you have to assume that everybody has a car or two, and, and if in the future, you know, it's, it's hard to tear a building down and add more parking, but it's pretty easy that if twenty years down the road, people really are getting out of their cars, to allow the developer then to take out some parking spaces and put another amenity or a bill, another building on what was a parking lot. So I agree with Danielle that we need to, we need to solve the parking problem that we have now, and we can give bonuses later if people actually get out of their, their vehicles, and that's how I look at all, all developments, when we're, when we're discussing this and reviewing it, is that I'm looking for the parking that solves today's problem, because like I said, it's easier to tear up a parking lot and build a building than it is to tear down a building and, and put in a parking lot, so, yeah.
I worked in transit eons ago and learned lots, including that people are more likely to use transit if, if it, yeah, comes more frequently than once an hour, but also if they've got a sheltered bus stop, and you're not just standing out there in the elements. You talked about developer incentives, I got me thinking there.
Yeah, well, I, I lived in, I lived in Finland, and I could easily have lived there without a car. I was in a small town of fourteen thousand people, and the bus, a bus of some kind did the main drag that I lived just a block off of, came by every ten to fifteen minutes. And so, why would I want a car, you know, it's, it was, it was easy. But here, where you have to wait an hour, I don't have an hour in my data to sit and, you know, figure out what to do until the bus arrives, and, and, you know, there's no easy solution to that, but, but there is a frequency at which people are gonna say, oh, yeah, it's, it's easy to take the bus. And for me personally, the other thing was is that in, when I was in Finland, you had a pass, and you just showed them the pass. Here, when they first started Skagit Transit, I, I rode the bus the first two years over to the mall and stuff all the time, because it was front-loaded, I could just climb on the bus and go. As soon as they switched over to having to come up with a change, because back then, it was still, you had to come up with the money, dollar fifty or seventy-five cents, I can't remember what it was, as soon as I had to start digging through my pockets to find the money, then I quit riding the bus at all, I haven't rode it since, and now they've got cards and all the stuff, so it's probably a little easier, but, but I'm, I'm just saying, it's, it's about ease of use and frequency of, of stops and stuff, it's pretty, pretty simple, but hard to do financially for, for transit.
Yeah, convenience, right?
And also just another thought is, street parking is great, it's nice to have that in addition, but obviously that is public parking, unless it's alongside the street but on private property, in which case it's not really street parking then, but, but yeah, that should never be assumed to be satisfying the, the parking requirement, it just doesn't work. Especially if it is, well, if it's public, then anybody can use it, and then you get into the whole thing of people saying, well, I want this designated, my parking is, like, you can't do that, it's public right of way, and, so.
Yeah, the last time we were going back and forth between the one parking stall versus two required for each of these, I think I'm gonna stick with two, hearing, hearing these comments.
If it helps, I don't live in any community, but I do live in a condo association complex, and I would, if you had two cars, each unit has its own garage, which would be different for share parking. But I would, if you had two cars, one must be in your garage, they park in front of your garage.
What do they call it, tandem parking?
Tandem parking, yeah. That is interesting, our parking standards do require that each car be independently mobile, so we do not allow for tandem parking.
Oh.
At least for typical housing. It would be an option to write into our parking standards, if we wanted to do so, for these types of developments, tandem parking is an exception for these specifically. Sorry, just one more thing, the concern there is potential for access to the home for any kind of emergency situation, or access out. Say your house is on fire and you really need to get away, with the compact size of these places, I do have concerns about life safety in that scenario.
I just had a flashback to my first house in Broadview in Seattle, and I had a long, single, I mean, a long, narrow driveway, and the garage was detached back in back of the house, so you'd drive down, and anyway, you could park one car in the garage, and you could park three more in the driveway alongside your house, and my roommate backed right into me one morning, and I thought, this is not a good thing. Yeah, so I see what you mean, but, but that was standard for, all those houses in that whole neighborhood had one long driveway and a garage in the back.
Before that requirement was put in place, that was, that was a common thing. You'll see a lot of the old houses in Cedar Woolly do have tandem parking driveways, so, yeah. But that was a common occurrence, people backing into each other, I need to get to work, I need you to move your car, and they're nowhere to be found.
Yeah, gotta get all your roommates up to move so you can get out, or you park on the road. But, you know, if, if we're trying to conserve space, tandem parking makes sense, because the one in the garage might stay there all year, you know?
Right.
Who knows? You just gotta coordinate who goes first.
That, that's what my house does, we have, we have five cars. I have, my, my wife and I and both of my daughters live at home, they're, everybody's working, but they haven't been able to buy a place, so they, they're living at home, and, and so we have, we have. a place. So they, they're living at home. And, and so we have, we have five cars right now because the youngest one bought a new car and the old one we haven't sold yet. And so even before that, when it was just four, it was, it's musical chairs every day. We get together every evening after dinner and who's doing what tomorrow. And we line the cars up in that order. And, and that's how, you know, who has to leave when.
Coordination there.
Yeah. But that's the only way it works.
I think setbacks are a big thing, too. I think when, right now it's 20 feet between, on the front. But if there's a garage, it's 25 feet, I think.
Correct.
And I was out on Camino Island helping somebody move the other day. And when you have a pickup truck, you help everybody move. I was observing how tiny that community is or how tiny the houses are on the west side of Camino Island. And there's no setback. The cars that pull into their little carports or their garages, they're like maybe one foot from the road or two feet from the road. And I don't even think they thought of setbacks when they were building those communities in the 40s and 30s, 40s, 50s.
Right.
And with our, with our large setbacks, it kind of limits what we can and can't do.
But even with the setbacks we have, I don't know if it's the 20-foot apron or the 25-foot apron, but one of them, these crew cab trucks with an extended bumper on the back of it, I have to go out into the planning strip or out into the street to get around them when I'm walking.
Well, it's like they park on the, on Metcalf, they park on the sidewalk.
Yeah, they pull the tire up on the, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
And they're still in the way.
Well, you're supposed to be driving smaller cars with smaller houses, but I guess it doesn't work that way, does it?
Some of the parking spaces at Wildwood, they had, they were parallel to the road and in front of the house.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, still within the lot, but like here's the street, here's the parking space. If that makes sense.
So it's just an indent from the street?
Pull up and back in and, yeah. So it wasn't on-street parking, but it did, it was a clever use of the space, I think. Yeah. And with setbacks, you could kind of get away with that if it's not a structure, because then it's just a parking pad. And then we can work out whether we want it pervious or impervious. But, but yeah, as soon as you put a cover on it, then, you know, the question arises, do you really want it that close to the, you know, if you're wanting to keep kind of an open, open feel? So.
And again, those are six-month at a time places, too.
Yeah. And, and a lot of those folks are there during the nicer months of the year where they're not as concerned about covered areas. And I mean, that's not a prerequisite. It's just nice if it's all year round. I know the apartment complex I live in has a combination of, you know, well, they have all three. They have garages, carports and uncovered spaces. And so, you know, depending on how many rooms you have, you're entitled to, the garages are pretty limited and we didn't even have a chance to get one. So that was a little bit different. But, but you're entitled to one covered space and then any overflow has to, you're allowed, you know, you know, a parking space is based on the number of bedrooms and then anything offside that has to park somewhere, not in the complex. So people park on the street parking in that case, but.
Yeah. And that's, that's pretty common for a lot of multifamily housing.
Right. Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's eight o'clock. Should we continue this another next month? Or what do you want, what would you like to talk about next?
I think I've got some good notes, just thinking through the draft amendments and how I might want to address some of the things we talked about last time, now that we've kind of got an image in our mind about what, what we're trying to achieve here and kind of maybe reworking some things. So.
I, I, last month, I think it was Commissioner Sexton said, I'd sure like to see this diagrammed out. And that helped a lot because I could see it diagrammed out for, you know, time. But I doodled a diagram. I was going to show it to her and everybody, but maybe next month we could look. Because when I drew it, I had a lot of questions.
Yeah.
Like, how big is the streets? How big are the parking lots? How big are the driveways? How big are the walkways? How many walkways? Open space, a big question there. You know, I put in 6,000 feet, but then I read and it says you can count your driveways and your roads as open space. I thought, oh. And then, you know, six houses need 6,000 feet. What if you have 11 houses? Is it still 6,000 feet? So it just went on and on. The more I drew, the more questions I had. So, but I don't want to do it all tonight.
Yeah, that's fair.
Yeah. But that's great that you went through it, Jill. It's awesome. It's awesome that you went through that, though, and gave up all those questions we've got to answer. Yeah, that's good.
A question, just because I've never done something like this before, but I'd like to do a workshop with everyone here. I know that if we get the planning commission together, if it's a quorum that we have to notify the public about a meeting like that and we special meeting of some kind.
Or we could do it on a third Tuesday, couldn't we?
Yeah, yeah.
I was going to say, we used to do, we used to do workshops.
Have you ever, yeah, that was my curiosity, like, does it have to be formatted like this?
No, we put a big table out there and drew up PRD or whatever we did.
Okay, yeah. So I'd love to do something like that and maybe invite the contractor.
Mixed-use urban village. We were trying to sort that out, so we just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, or anybody else.
Or anybody, yeah.
Okay.
I'd love to do that. So maybe we can, we can work on doing something like that for the next meeting, sitting down and really drawing things up and have more of a workshop type session with this.
Roll up our sleeves.
Yeah.
That's cool.
Yeah. Okay. Well, yeah, if you want to move forward to the next.
Okay. So the unfinished business section is over at 8:05. Moving on to new business. What would new business be? Hopefully nothing?
Nothing.
Okay. We'll skip over that. Next one, information discussion items. Welcome, Community Development Director, Tom Glover. Welcome, Tom. Nice to meet you. I think you were on a Zoom meeting once or twice, maybe. Were you? Were you, were you on a Zoom meeting once?
Yes, I was.
Or maybe I was on the Zoom meeting and you were here, but it's just.
For a council meeting, I was.
A council meeting. Oh, maybe that was it?
Yeah.
Okay. And Assistant Planner, Ashton. Nice to meet you. And we, who, who does the minutes? Is that you?
Jenna and then I correct them.
Oh, okay.
Jenna's a permit tech.
Well, ever since you did the minutes, they've been, they've been fantastic.
I have eyes on it. It's perfect. But, yeah, I don't know if we want to do introductions, get to know Tom and Ashton a little bit better. We can do that real quick before we end.
Sure.
Tom?
Great, thanks. Good evening. So I have a bachelor's degree in urban and regional planning from Eastern Washington University, Go Eagles, and a master's degree in the same topic from University of Colorado. And I've worked, started out in plant, actually, my very first planning job was with Pierce County Planning at Tacoma, back a long time ago. But then I've also, my career took, I served in the Peace Corps and did urban planning over in Yemen, of all places. And came back to the States and moved to Colorado and pursued my degree there, worked in transit planning and land use planning, and eventually landed in the southwest part of the state, where that was my first administrator job, town administrator in a little town at the base of Mesa Verde National Park, a beautiful place. And then several years ago, accepted a job with Walla Walla County and served both the county and the city for, and their NPO for 12 years. After that, I was in Prosser for three and a half years as their city administrator. And one day bumped into Charlie and he said they have an opening here and would I be interested? So I met with Charlie and the mayor and interviewed. And I thought, wow, such nice people. This is really great. So a professional organization. And Nicole gave me a great tour of the city. We chatted along the way and I thought, this is a really cool place. So I'm happy to be here.
Great. Welcome.
Thank you.
Ashton.
Hit your button on your mic.
Yeah, your button.
Thanks. And then my name's Ashton. I am graduating with a bachelor's in urban planning assistant in development from Western in four weeks. Thank you. And then I'm also pursuing a minor in geography and environmental studies. I have a little bit of experience in the public sector. I was the asset management intern for the city of Colorado Springs last summer. Colorado Springs is my hometown, so I grew up out there. I'm very excited to join the planning department here. I've had just a great experience so far. Nicole and Tom are both very nice. I love Cedar Woolley. It reminds me of my hometown a lot. Yeah. And it's close to Bellingham, so it's great.
So you're a skier?
Yes, I am a skier.
Way to go. No, snow, snowboarder, right?
No, I am a skier.
Really?
Yeah.
Way to go.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Colorado connection and an Eastern Washington.
Yeah. Well, we just about have a full house here with everybody. Are you still looking? I still see on our website, we're looking for hiring people. Maybe thanks mostly police and.
Police and fire.
Yeah.
Other things.
Police and fire. They're always looking for police and fire.
Yeah. Okay. Well, moving right along. Thank you for that. And I guess I can enter, see, do we, anything else before we ask for closure? Anyone want to make a motion that we adjourn? Did I hear you?
To restate, boy, I know, may or may not have considered the fact that helping properties is a organization that wants to take homes. I think it's important that we consider what's affordable.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's the goal.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. Anyone else?
I'm good.
Would you like to move that we adjourn?
Oh, okay. I never do that, but I'll do that. I make a motion that we adjourn for the evening, so.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor of adjuring?
Aye.
Aye. Nays? Okay. Thank you for everything.
And close, close time?
What's that?
Closing time?
Oh, I'm sorry. Closing at 8:11. I forgot the time.
Yeah.